I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who was audio or video recording? If you could just please indicate, and I see none. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have selectmen's comments and announcements. Mr. Ward?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Lapointe?
No, thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing myself. Public comments and announcements. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Edward Wayne Ford, Jr.
Into the mic a little.
Now into the mic.
You just bring your mouth, yep.
My name is Edward Wayne Ford, Jr. I am currently at 273 Central Street. I am currently inquiring about a right-to-use town property permit for camping about a week to a two-week stay. The goal would be to collect seeds and specimens of native herbs as well as teach survival skills.
Okay. Yeah, I remember you mentioned that the last time you were here. I think you need to start with someone other than the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I've tried with the town manager, and he shot me down and told me the paperwork didn't even exist. So, and then the police chief told me I could do it illegally until somebody complained. But unfortunately, I need to do this legally so that I can send these seeds to these colleges officially. And I would like to do this before March, when things start thawing and germinating and start growing. Because now, while the seeds are frozen, would be the best time to ship them to places like Europe, Africa, and Asia.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll meet with the town manager and talk to him about it. If there's something we can do, or we will, I don't know if there is, but let me look into it for you, Ed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Here, we see none. We do have a public hearing. Mr. Ward, would you do the honors?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Winchton, January 9, 2023. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing is scheduled to be held by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Winchton, Massachusetts, on the 23rd day of January at 6:30 PM in the second-floor auditorium of the Winchton Town Hall, 109 Front Street, upon the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Second Street, National Grid to install one joint-owned pole on Second Street beginning at a point approximately 1,050 feet north of the central line of the intersection of Second Street and West Menominee Road. Install one pole on Second Street for new service and to relieve sag from long span. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Second Street, Winchton, Massachusetts. Plan number 30686133 dated December 1, 2022. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Any comments, questions, or concerns can be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen prior to the meeting by mailing the selectmen at 109 Front Street, Department 1, Winchton, Mass. 01475, by email at mcallandrellala@townofwinchton.com, or by calling the office at 978-297-0085. Signed, Mary Callandrella, Executive Assistant for the Winchton Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the poll petition public hearing for Second Street?
It's still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Public hearing is now open. Are there anyone from National Grid here this evening?
Unfortunately, National Grid was going to send a rep, Mr. Fontaine. He was unable to make it due to the weather. He said it's a pretty standard petition, poll petition hearing. And if he had any outside questions, he'd be happy to answer them for you.
All right, thank you.
But all the butters were notified. We didn't hear back, but from one, he had no issues.
All right, thank you. Are there any abutters or anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions that the board has at this time? Seeing and hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the poll petition public hearing for Second Street.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Any questions, comments? Again, pretty standard.
Madam Chair?
None. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the poll petition to install one joint-owned pole on Second Street as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you for that message.
Thank you.
Appointments resignations. We have, I have two letters, but I understand she is, from Camille Hart, having to resign from some of the volunteer work that she's been doing in town. Communications Committee, the Cultural Council. And did she submit one for the Recreation Committee?
She did. It's double-sided.
Ah, thank you, yes.
Recreation Committee as well.
Yes, thank you. I'm very sorry to hear this, but I'm sure she has a lot on her plate, and we'll have more as the next few years come along. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to accept the resignation of Camille Hart from the Cultural Council, Recreation Commission, and Communications Committee, and I also would like to thank her for her involvement. Her name pops up all the time, so she was really involved in the town.
Absolutely. Is there a second?
May I? Can I vote on this? Okay, second.
Maiden seconded to accept the resignations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and again, with thanks, Camille. Entertainment permits. Is the packet available on Dropbox?
It is.
It should be, but the network has been sporadic, so we have hard copies available.
I only see up to the 17th. I don't have a folder for the 23rd.
I don't either.
I'm guessing that's a connectivity thing.
There must be.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay, because there's nothing in our printed packet on the permits and licenses.
I'm sorry on that. I had thought everybody had access to the Dropbox, but I do have all the documents here, if you'd like them.
How dare you not be able to control the snow.
I triple-checked to make sure everything was uploaded.
Long before the power went.
Oh, yeah.
I think if I had logged on at home in time, I would have been fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I can't see it on this.
Too small.
Okay, here it is.
That's fine. Snowbound Club. Do you have any fun day to be held? February 11, 2023. 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. We have a current food service. That's Board of Health. Appears no other issues from any of the other department heads. My apologies. Music concert. Is anyone here to speak to this?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I think you look familiar. So, how many days, how many times have you held this event?
This is the third time we're trying to pull it off. I think the first year, we got washed out, and we weren't able to do it. But we did do the spaghetti supper and the dancing and had inside music. So, last year, we did finally, we were able to get on the pond, weather permitting, and did ice skating and had the radar runs, and then we did the meal at night with the music. So, we're trying to do it again this year, and hopefully the weather is in our favor again.
Very good. Do you normally have any police detail?
He didn't make us do a police detail last year. We have paramedics on site during the radar runs to be safe, per the insurance requirements, but...
Okay, yeah, I didn't see any note from Chief Woski, so, okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Just for my own information, what's a radar run?
Just speed runs. The snowmobiles go one at a time and see how fast they can go. Everyone puts $5 into the pot, and then the fastest guy takes the pot.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the entertainment permit for the family fun day at the Snowbound Club for February 11, 2023, from 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck. Next up, Recreation Commission. One, two, three, four. You gotta... All right, so the first... So, this is for the community days at the park, some programming. No issues with department heads. So, concert, recorded live music, amp system, food games, and other activities. Questions, comments from the board members? Do we have... Okay, so just to confirm, the dates you're looking for were January 1st, I'm sorry, January 1st, July 1st, August 5th, and September 2nd, 2023.
Correct.
All three days would be from 11 to 3.
Yes.
Okay.
And these will all be at the amphitheater area?
Yes, the cul-de-sac lawn and within the amphitheater, depending on which, you know, activities are happening at that time.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, there it is. Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the entertainment permit for the community days at the Community Park for July 1st, August 5th, and September 2nd, from 11 to 3 p.m. as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, we have an entertainment permit, Recreation Commission, for the amphitheater grand opening, June 10, 2023, from 3 to 9 p.m. No issues from the department heads. Looks like you have quite a few things scheduled.
We have quite a few. It's actually been changing a little bit in terms of a couple of the... One of our bands had to back out, so we've been changing that a little bit, but otherwise, it's filling up.
Okay, good.
Had a lot of interest.
Good. And I saw no, you'll have a police detail and...
Yes, so I already spoke with the chief about...
As far as any food vendors, proper licensing and such?
Yep, they'll all be required to get their own licensing, but yes, we'll make sure they have.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the entertainment permit for the amphitheater grand opening for June 10, 2023, from 3 to 9 p.m. as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next up, entertainment permit for the Recreation Commission, the Easter egg hunt on April 1, 2023, at 1 p.m. And this will be where?
This year, we're going to be holding it at Gar Park due to the construction.
Jar Park?
Community Park, yep.
Okay. No issues with department heads, and that would be at 1 p.m.?
Nope, 10 a.m.
10 a.m.
And we did have a rain date on there for the following day, April 2.
Okay, rain date. Thank you. War 2. Questions, comments from the board? I have to ask about age groups?
Yep, so this year, we've decided to keep it, I think it's somewhere on there. I'll have to look. It might be in my event actual thing on Facebook. But we're keeping the age to 10 and under this year, and we're hoping that the way Gar is set up, and seeing we have to be there anyways, that it's kind of got the four sections with the sidewalks, that we can kind of do three age groups in each, one in each section, kind of. I think that's the hopes for this year. It's a section off, yep.
Excellent, and hopefully the weather will cooperate.
I hope so.
It's weird to be talking about things for April and Easter, and you look outside and you go, oh my God.
I'm ready to go.
But it'll be here soon, quite sooner than we realize. Questions, comments from the board? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the entertainment permit for the Easter egg hunt for April 1, 2023, starting at 10 a.m. with a rain date of April 2, 2023, as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, pardon me, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Food Truck Festival, Battle of the Bands, G.A.R. Park, June 23, 2023, 4 to 9 p.m. There were no issues from the department heads. Rain or shine? Questions, comments from the board?
No, just that this is one of my favorite events of the year, along with the concerts at Gar Park. I really enjoy those.
If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Motion to approve the entertainment permit for the Food Truck Festival, Battle of the Bands, for June 23, 2023, from 4 p.m. to 9 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And last one, Summer Concert Series, speaking of the concert series. Looking on Fridays, beginning July 7, and going through August 4, 6 to 8, at the gazebo at G.A.R. Park. Rain date on the following Sundays. No department head issues. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the entertainment permit for the Summer Concert Series from, I guess, July 7 to August 4, from 2023, from 6 to 8 p.m.
On Fridays.
And on Fridays, with the rain dates of the following Sundays, from 2 to 4 p.m.
Second.
Thank you. Maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me. All right, we have no committee department head reported this evening. New business, special town meeting, March 13, 2023. We have before us the draft warrant. Mr. Saltzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you have your draft warrant for the Monday, March 13, 2023, special town meeting, there are six proposed articles on here, among them, committee reports, which may be passed over, but from the Finance Committee, which is a usual and customary article. Prior year's bills, which I put in a placeholder of $25,000. I don't anticipate it's going to be that high, but I just wanted the number I could walk back from. Broadcasting equipment upgrades, $40,000. I anticipated to be a little bit under that as well. We have a carryover town bylaw amendment from the Recreation Commission. It was lumped into that larger change that ended up not passing at the last meeting. This piece had no controversy attached to it, and it's really kind of holding them up from their business. So, we're putting that forward. The Community Preservation Act, which we've discussed at length, and an item that came up late in the week, last week, the Whitney Pond Dam non-binding referendum, which there's actually a later agenda point on this, 7.5, that we can dig into a little bit more. But essentially, there was a large sum of money set aside as a bond bill several years ago that hasn't been accessible. Mr. Kroto put the work in with the state and got them to release several hundred thousand dollars to at least start the design phase on that, running in the same theme of trying to get designs in hand, so we have something shovel-ready to help us get grants. So, as part of that process, the engineers have kind of hit a snag, and they're at a crossroad. So, basically, there's a more cost-effective way that they could repair the dam that would keep it as-is in terms of the existing water levels today. There's a more expensive option that has a little more risk, where you could build the dam back up and increase the water levels, again, back to where they were historically. And so, I wasn't really comfortable making that decision. Mr. Kroto wasn't. That's why he brought it to me. I brought it to the chair. The chair encouraged to bring it to the larger body, so we'll let the community kind of let us know about that. I suppose we can probably skip that agenda item coming up later, but, because I just rehashed it. But another piece of that is just putting the word out to the community if they would like to participate in that conversation. It's going to be coming up at future meetings as well, so please, we love to hear from our residents, and we could really appreciate their direction on this particular item. Beyond that, in terms of specific language, Article 1 is typical for the committee reports, as is Article 2. We'll be listing what the specific bills are and explaining them on the floor when the time comes for the final draft. Article 3 for a capital purchase. So, for this one, the conversation is, I guess, the cleanest way to go about doing this, we want to use the money coming in from the Comcast contract. That's going to turn over to Free Cash anyway, so recommending the use of Free Cash, that's effectively going to be backfilled when that Comcast money comes in and turns over to Free Cash. Believe it or not, that's the cleanest way, but as the words come out of my mouth, it didn't sound that great. So, we'll brush up the way I described that, but that's the intent there. Article 4 is the bylaw amendment I described, which, I mean, actually, Tiffany, I don't know if you'd care to walk through it. Does the group want to run through that real quick?
So, what we're proposing here is actually, the most important part of this is a merge between the current Recreation Commission and the Winchton Community Park Group to be one group, which will essentially become a Parks and Recreation. We're doing a lot of the same things, and as the park has grown and become more involved with the amphitheater and is going to need a lot of programming help, it just makes sense to have the two groups kind of be one. All of our committee members have been on board with this for over about a year, and we've been, keep getting pushed off about getting it on there. And with the amphitheater and the park opening back up, it's really important that we get this together just to be more cohesive and, you know, make things work as efficiently as possible. The other thing that you may notice that we took out of there, although I'm going to look at this because, all right, is that we don't have set student and adult seats on there. That was becoming really restrictive in the terms and the way that people could sit on the committee at one point. It doesn't mean we don't allow students. We do. We currently have more students on our commission than we do adults. But that being said, those are the two major changes to this. Any of the other wording is just like more specific to how we'll maintain that cohesive group and what their roles actually are.
Any questions on that one?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, one question, because I didn't, when I read this, I wasn't even thinking that we were combining, because that's not really stress at all in this. So, the Winchton Community Park Group, shouldn't their recommendation be on this, where we're combining them?
So, they have voted to recommend it, I suppose, right?
We can add the numbers there.
So, I can add that on there?
Yeah.
I think the public should see it.
Excellent note. Thank you.
And the only other thing I will point out, you sort of referred to, this was in the original packet that was turned down at town meeting. This was not part of that packet at all at town meeting. The part was only for the charter that the people voted on. It was not bylaws. They only voted charter.
I apologize. I should have described that better. So, it wasn't physically part of that packet, but it was wrapped up in the same thing in that the, we were waiting on the charter changes to occur in order to put through this bylaw change, is what I should say. So, my apologies. They were theoretically connected, but not physically connected on the warrant.
Not at town meeting.
You're going to leave, just leave it, leave the name Recreation Commission?
I'm so sorry.
You're just going to leave the name Recreation Commission?
No, it should, it should be Parks and Recreation. I think that's something that we're going to go over the wording of what that should say. It does still say Recreation Commission, because that's how the current bylaw is written, and I'm not sure.
Right.
I'll advise to Justin about if it should, what it should read on the article warrant as the change.
Okay.
And so, you'll notice that's also why we expanded the seat number to nine, so that we can merge and have enough seats for people.
Nice.
I would, Madam Chair, I would also urge you to just look at the charter, because I'm sure this seems okay, but the charter is sort of specific saying that the changes must go through the Charter Bylaw Committee and then submitted to town meeting. So, now, we're not going through the committee at this point. They've never voted on this recreation one. They've never voted on it. So, just check with legal that you can come to the town meeting from a group's request to change the bylaws.
Sure. Did they definitely?
They did not bring it up.
Just come from a higher power?
No, it was sent to them. It's in the file, but it was never acted on, because they were only dealing with the charter to get that out of the way first.
Right, okay.
But they were accepting information, you know.
Good point.
I would just check it out, so...
Anything further?
Great, moving along, and just also a thank you to the Recreation Commission and the Winchton Community Park and everybody involved. They put a lot of work in trying to hash this out, and thank you to Tiffany for her leadership as well and helping move that along. Article 5, the Community Preservation Act. So, this is just language by example. The committee is currently working on kind of finalizing the terms of what it's going to look like. I did have a productive conversation with Mr. Stuart Sagnor, who's the director of the Community Preservation Coalition with the state, about process. And one interesting component is, the committee has stressed that they want certain provisions in there in terms of like makeup of the membership, how many citizen seats, who appoints the citizen seats, things along those lines. That's actually a separate vote, so that was something I learned myself as well. So, the vote going through on this would effectively authorize the existence of the Community Preservation Act separately as a bylaw change, because there needs to be something that actually governs how that committee is set up. That would go through at the annual town meeting in May, if it passed the ballot in May. If it fails at the ballot, then we would just pass it over. So, that's an important note to the committee, but we'll be moving on with that and have some final language in a couple of weeks. And then the last piece, once again, wording to be worked on, but just to have something in there, the Whitney Pond Dam non-binding referendum, which isn't the most exciting title for an article, but it is what it is, and it should at least generate some conversation and give us a little bit... generate some conversation and give us a little bit of direction as a community. So, those are the six that we're looking at. If anybody has any questions or anybody from the public, please do reach out, and we'll have a final draft at your upcoming meeting.
And when does the warrant close?
You got me. I'll double, I'll double check. I'll double check that. Do you have it?
I do have it on my guy. My little habit, sorry.
Is it, oh, you're still here. Hey. It's, yeah, for the special.
The March town.
Thursday at noon.
Oh, last Thursday at noon, okay. We'll confirm that, but, yeah.
So, is it still open? Is it closed?
I believe it's closed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's a special town meeting. Now, we're looking at the annual town meeting, and the special town meeting for May. Mr. Saltzback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this was reviewed at your recent quad board meeting, but it does require an official vote from the board to announce the, and set the date of the special and annual town meeting for May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. So, if it pleases the board, there is a recommended motion at the bottom of the memo.
Thank you. Questions, comments? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move the board schedule an annual town meeting for Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P. M. to be held at the Murdoch Middle High School, and to open the annual town meeting warrant on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, er, sorry.
And to open the special and annual.
I think, I think there's, yeah, but an updated draft.
Okay.
So, if I blow this up for you, can you see it on the screen?
Okay. Let me start over. I move the board schedule a special and annual town meeting for Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P. M. to be held at the Murdoch Middle High School, and to open the special and annual town meeting warrant on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at eight A. M., and to close the special and annual town meeting warrant on Monday, April third, at noon.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And just noting that the warrant opens tomorrow at eight A. M. Thank you very much. Moving on. Town manager evaluation. This is something that we've been working on for a little bit. I missed a meeting, various reasons. You have in your packet the summary of the reviews. This is typically an annual review. Because of the timing of Mr. Saltzback's employment, we did one in February, and now we're doing a year-end to get back into the cycle. You'll find the rankings. There's ten categories. There is a narrative evaluation from each of the five members. You'll notice some asterisks in the chart, and those asterisks are noted after the narrative evaluations. And something that I added to it was what the scale is that we use for rating when we go through the, the evaluation. So, those who are not familiar with it will, will be able to reference it. So, I'll open up. Two questions, comments? From the board or Mr. Saltzback? And I checked and I double-checked the math, but if you find something wrong, please say something.
Well, as the board musled over, I'll kill, I'll kill some dead air for you. I just do want to say that I appreciate the feedback from the entire board, genuinely. I think there's some good constructive criticism, criticism there. Nobody's perfect, although we all strive to be. I, I'm most appreciative that overall, the average of the score on a hundred scale comes out to about eighty-nine point four percent. And I think outside of statistical outliers, it comes to about ninety-seven point three. So, it's a pretty good score. I certainly appreciate the feedback. And as I'd like to highlight in my self-assessment to this body and to the town as well, I think a lot of the work that we do throughout the year, those aren't solely my accomplishments. It's a team effort. In fact, a lot, a lot of people, Mr. O'M presence as well. So, thank you to the team. I really appreciate it. Thank you to this community for the opportunity to continue to serve Winchon and help move it forward. As always, thank you to this board for the invaluable direction that you provide. It's certainly appreciated.
Thank you. And I will just ask once again, any questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I believe we now have to work on his goals for the coming year.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to keep that on the radar.
I appreciate that. And I know that, you know, some months ago, a board member brought up the fact that they felt that some of the categories on this evaluation are no longer, you know, talks about COVID. No, it is, it is still an issue. We never got off the ground as far as revising it. So, sometime, I know we won't be doing this again for a year, but I think I'd like to strike while the iron is hot, and within the next, I'll say, month, if all the board members would take time to go through it, just, you know, a quick, shoot me a quick email, hey, this, I don't feel this is relevant anymore. And if we start now, maybe by next December, we'll have a, we'll have a working document. Anything further on this issue?
I would just like input as to whether there's anything Mr. Saltzback would particularly like to be taken out or added. You don't have to answer now, but, yes, also.
I'll give it some thought. Thank you.
Okay.
Good point.
All right. And a big thank you to all the board members for doing that. Next, we have a report from UMass, the Employee Salary Survey. Mr. Saltzback, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's doing it. So, we have a representative from UMass Boston with us this evening, as well as the full report of the salary survey that we had done. I'd like to try to get them on board real quick before I run through this. If I could just take a minute, please.
Yes.
Hey, Mary. It's Justin Saltzback. How's it going? Not, not much, but we are ready for you. So, I see, perfect. I see you're logged in, so I'm just going to turn the audio and the screen on, and then you can address the group up on the big screen. Uh, both. All right. Thank you. She just had it on in the background and was moving about her home, so she's, there we go.
Hello?
Good evening.
Can you hear, can you hear us?
I can't hear you. You're muted.
Did she say she can or she can't?
She can't.
Cannot. She said you were muted.
Into which microphone? This one? Can you hear us now?
I think it still says he's unmuted.
Yeah, it shows muted on your Dawn O'Neil.
It's gonna.
It's gonna.
There you go.
It's gonna feed back. I have to, I think I have to kill it on this. All right, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
A little better.
One second.
Tess.
Or maybe just let her talk.
Yeah. All right, we're, we're just going to let you talk, but I'm going to introduce you real quick, okay?
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you. We'll continue to work on that. My apologies. So... Just to run you through the memo real quick, back in late September, this is something that I brought forward to the board. We put it out to bid, and Collins Center came back at UMass Boston to conduct a large-scale salary survey for about thirty positions in Town Hall. To be brief, the important piece of this is that it's not a decision that I wanted to be making for several reasons. One of them is that I wanted to be something that was independent part of it, so that we're not needlessly overpaying employees. But I think the other component is that we're kind of getting an outside broader view on what the general market is for labor, where it's presently kind of a complex situation. Something that we wanted to highlight is that obviously, you know, for Winchon and there are certain financial components, but when it comes to the available labor market, those are things that are outside of our borders necessarily. It kind of flows. So, ultimately, the major benefit here is that we want to make sure we're retaining employees. We want to make sure that we're taking care of our employees and paying them a fair wage. But additionally, when we're out there kind of searching for available candidates, we also want to make sure that we're not needlessly overpaying for some of these roles in an effort to attract talent. And I think this will help us make a more informed decision as we move through the budget process. So, with that, I'm just going to click back. All right, that was.
You're still, you're still echoing, but that's okay. I can.
So, I'm going to let you speak, but I'm just not talking. So, I'm going to play a little more of a tone and breathe, like you'd like to walk, uh, walk, walk, or through it. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, that's great. So, what I can do, I can do is work it from the report. If I can take questions, and if that's a challenge, it can be related, maybe typed in. But also, sometimes we find that people like to receive the report, have a chance to digest it, and then come up with questions. So, those can be funneled through the town manager, and I can certainly come back again. And with notice, I can make that be in person. Love to visit one of my best friends who lives in your town. We grew up in Dartmouth together. So, I'd love to be in the area, but glad I'm not driving there tonight. So, just a quick introduction. It's my name, Mary Ickerty. I lead HR practice at Collins Center for Public Management. I've been with the center thirteen years. My background is all municipal, state, nonprofit, HR, labor relations. I was the HR Director of Water Town for nine years, in Washington for three years, Wellesley for a while, prior to that Mass, W. I was home with my kids for a while after Water Town. Now, I do consulting, and I have two in college and one out of college, so I pretty much work full-time. I started out as a part-time. So, I'm happy to be with you tonight, and this is a very straightforward project. A salary survey is not meant to be the be-all and end-all, but how do you get a sense of where you are in your market? So, we go to page two, where it talks about the introduction and the purpose. The purpose of doing a salary survey is really to just measure where you are and snapshot in time. So, that will be on the next page that's showing. And it really gives you a sense of what your labor market is. One of the things we like to talk about, when we talk about a labor market, is that it is in fact your region. So often, municipalities, how do I say it, bliding, get hung up on or get locked down in comparability. A labor market is not about comparability. It's about where do your employees come from? How far will they thrive to come to you? We often look at where do your, where do your employees live? Do they all live in town? Do they live nearby? How far is somebody willing to come to you? Have you lost people to other municipalities because of your compensation? So, some of those things are what we talk about when we deal with the labor market. So, I just wanted to touch on, a labor market really is your region, and it's not finding the exact income EQP population. You can have a perfect map at KPOD, you're not your labor market. Or even further, you know, outside of central Massachusetts or on the west. So, I just like to mention that. Our methodology, methodology is, we got all these titles from the town manager. We created a survey instrument. We submitted that to surrounding municipalities, and we were able to collect data from a number of, of the area. So, we got data from, it's in the report, but it's useful for those who may not have it in front of them. Ashburnham, Assaul Air, Dartmouth, Springfield, Everest, Wounded River, Orange, Phillipson, Princeton, Sterling, Templeton, and Westminster. Thirteen municipalities is a good survey pool. It allows for averages and dividends and maximums. We can take out outliers. So, having thirteen data points on a lot of positions is really going to give you some good data. What we found, like we talk about, the discussion is, many of your titles are under the labor market. I want to be clear that when we see data that shows that you're under the market, it just means that data point in time. Some of the things, and you can see in that table on page three, that you're seeing the title, the factors in discussion. So often, factors contribute to the responses and how relative they are to the data. Things like title comparison. The town manager and I had a conversation the other day, that we realized that a building superintendent was treated by some of the municipalities as the building commissioner. So, we need to go back in and address some of that data. Not until you get a look at it, you can see that really wasn't the true title comparison from that responding municipality. And when you get to those charts, we're right to point that out. Administrative assistant or principal clerk, that's another one, that in one municipality, an administrative assistant could be the executive secretary to a select board, and another one, it could be a receptionist. So, title comparison is really important. And I'm still on that table on page three that has the header of factor in discussion. Data points. Not every municipality has, has the same title. So, some of your titles, like town clerk, has a huge response. Every municipality has a town clerk. So, you have more data points. Not every municipality has an economic development coordinator or a position like that. So, you don't get as solid data. But what we can do is look at the trend and see where you sit in general for the data points. A survey is not an absolute, and it should not be looked at title by title. It should be looked at and coalesced as a group of titles. The organizational and staffing structure. Sometimes, a town planner can be a department head. Other towns, it could be a staff planner under an economic and community development director. So, you have to, when you look at the data, take that as a grain of salt, and take a look at those titles, and see where you sit in the organization. The reporting relationship is similar to the organizational and staff, staffing structure. Being a department head versus a division head versus a staff person can dictate where you sit in the labor market, what is the pay and what is the value of that position. And then, a large one that we deal with, particularly as, as multiple-sized municipalities, is what is the salary is what is the salary structure of the responding municipality? Many towns have pay ranges with a minimum and a maximum. Some don't have ranges at all, and positions have an individual pay. When a municipality doesn't have a range, it's really hard to say what they are willing to pay for a position, because they're paying the individual, not the position. Certainly, when the Collins Center does a classification and compensation study, where we create job descriptions and pay ranges, we do recommend ranges, so that you get that flavor of an entry-level position and some people want service. I don't know what I was saying. Okay. So you can see that table on page three. So sometimes you think when you look at the salary, they're out of line with the market. But you have to take into consideration these factors. On the top of page four, we talk about consideration internally. The reality is, you have to leave to make more money. If you have longstanding employees, they're going to actually just historically fall behind the market. It's just the beast that is municipal government. If you have any damage to the charging for positions now, you can't build the net of salaries that you have or the salaries you're gonna pay. So you have to consider that when you have these filling positions. You did. Our recommendations, and you can see that on the middle of page four. Take a look at the data, see if it makes sense. Say, does that make sense for us? Um, is that really the same town? Take a look at those lenses of that view of the level. We do recommend that you apply for a grant next year for a community compact, and we're getting job descriptions done. Get whole classification system done. Uh, look at recommended pay scales, maybe creating a system with pay ranges, but this is the first step in that. Um, and what you will see when you look at the data, and if you go through those tables on the next pages, really across the board, your town wages are below the market, minimum and maximum. So the first chart is, we look at the minimum, and you can see in the red, that shows you the red means you're under the positions in the labor market in terms of their ranges. Uh, the solid color, the black means that you are above or equal to. And you can see that in some positions, you're significantly under. However, one of them, in the middle of the page, there where it says inspectional, you can see that it says building superintendent. Many municipalities respond to that as building commissioner. So that's why that number is off. So data is only as good as is provided to us. So that's why we certainly would flag. You can also see that in some, the average and the median have some significant differences. Let me look, for example, a planning inspector. You can see that the average difference is six dollars and median difference is, is three dollars. That shows you that the backup data, there's an outlier. One of the big issues that we, we discuss in here is Pittsburgh is in this data. Pittsburgh has higher salaries. Sometimes, one municipality can skew that average, but that gets taken out when you look at the median. So if you see a difference of more than, you know, a dollar, you're gonna see that there's an outlier someplace. For example, when you look down to the senior library technician, you can see the average and the median are almost the same. And thirty-two cents or twelve cents, that means that you're fine. Even though the numbers are red, that's very close. So you really need to look at the data results with a critical eye. Um, now, one thing that I see on the classification page, for example, is, you know, a two, a one dollar fifty cents or a two dollar, uh, difference. That could be significant if a position was forty hours, um, forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year. That's a two thousand dollar difference at a dollar, and obviously at two dollars would be a four thousand dollar difference. However, sometimes the part-time positions are paid differently. So this is just used as a measuring stick. Another thing I wanted to bring up is that when we go to the maximum page, which are on the next one, on the next, uh, few pages, see, you will see, if you look at the backup data, we have more data points. That's because many of the municipalities that participated do not have ranges. They don't have a minimum and a maximum. But we actually have better data at the maximum pay level than we do at the minimum pay level. An example was the town manager and I were looking at one position, and their minimum pay was fifteen dollars an hour, and their maximum pay was twenty-four. Well, the fifteen is well below the market, and the twenty-four is at the market. So we tend to rely more heavily on the maximum pay, because as you may know, you're not, many towns don't fill positions at the minimum. So it's a matter of how many data points do you have, and, um, how you compare to other positions. The one on this, on this page, the planning coordinator, for example. Planning coordinator is one of those titles. Are they the town planner? Are they a secretary? Are they in between? Are they an administrative assistant or, um, an assistant, a planning assistant? So you'll see that that data really skewed, because somebody responding put and put in their top planner, um, position. So these positions get a little tricky, and you really have to delve into getting your full job descriptions. And, and rightly so, this project was to get an overview. Uh, if you were going to do a more in-depth analysis, or you wanted to look into one title, I would suggest you get the job descriptions from the surrounding municipalities, so that you're truly comparing the apples to, to apples. Um, that was a quick few. If somebody has some questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and answer them if it sounds works okay. Otherwise, they can speak to me, and I can get back to or come back again.
Am I gonna have the same issue? No. Mary, can you hear me? Thank you very much. This is Audrey, the chair.
I don't know if she can. Can, can you? No.
We're all muted.
I wanna just play with it. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes.
Ooh, nice.
Hi, Mary, this is Audrey, um, the chair. I just want, thank you very much for your presentation. Hi, Mary, can you hear me?
Barry.
Yeah, it's not coming through here, it's coming through there. I just wanted, this is Audrey, I'm the chair, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation.
Great pleasure.
Um, I did have one question. Um, you mentioned the thirteen towns municipalities that participated in the survey. How were those thirteen chosen?
Oh, excellent question, I should've said, we do it like in the Sessors' map. We do the abutting municipalities and then go out one or two ranks. And, um, you know, we, when we get to that number, uh, if you're close, we'll include them. Sometimes in the land area of, of other municipalities. So you'll see, if you looked at it with a compass, you would see that it's, um, in the, in the area. And we did, we did do the analysis with Pittsburgh and without Pittsburgh. So, um, the data that's in your report is with Pittsburgh, because we do believe Pittsburgh is a labor competitor for you. Uh, so we included it, but there is data in the backup, uh, spreadsheet that has that taken out. It really, with that many, it doesn't skew the numbers too much. But sometimes people feel having a, a much larger organization skews the data. In our humble opinion, it is an honest reflection of the market.
Okay, I think that's it for me for the moment. I may have more questions afterwards. I'll open it up to... I'll open it up to the board members. If there's anything else this evening?
Not right now, but I'll probably come up with some and send them if that's okay.
So that's what Mary and I talked about today, actually, was this might be a good opportunity for, for UMass review, and then we can make that through with the, um, UMass season. And some of these numbers can be played a little more, um, we need Mary to come back and give it to us, so we can kind of dig into this a little bit more. Um, it might have a lot of...
That sounds good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Don't hesitate to reach out. Take care.
Bye now.
Um, one, one piece I did want to highlight before we moved away from it, because it was an item that came up in my review specifically, but the, um, the hiring of employees. So we, we successfully hired about, um, eight or nine employees over the past year, but two have been a little more difficult and are presently outstanding. One is the accountant piece, and the other is the planning and development, um, director. So a lot of that unfortunately is financially driven, I think we're, we're finding with the accountant. Um, but this data actually also kind of highlights the issue that we're running into, um, for the, what would be referred to as the, the community development director. So basically, what they're showing in the red that we're under, if you were to, um, extrapolate that out over forty hours a week for an entire fiscal year, that would be about a seventy-five hundred dollar deficit. So when we're going out to advertise for that role, um, we currently budget about eighty-five thousand. What this is suggesting is realistically would have to be in the low nineties, um, to attract talent out to Winchonin for that role. So just something to keep in the back of our head, uh, moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, moving on, old business. I'm sorry, one more. Whitney Pond DM feedback, I know you kind of touched on it a little bit. Um, I appreciate the, the email from Ty and Bond explaining... Um, actually, we'll have to put together an information packet, get it out to the, to the public, that non-binding question.
Yep, I, I might do just a, maybe a brief PowerPoint, um, and see if I can get some illustrations, maybe from the engineers that aren't identical to what's out there, but would kind of illustrate what some of these terms mean, because, um, I'm not an engineer, and most people in the community are not either. So I think it might be helpful to have some of those visual aids.
Absolutely. And as well, it would be also to explain, um, what the benefits of each option would be, and what the detraction, the pros and cons.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else on this at the moment?
No.
Okay. Um, now into old business. Accept donations, sponsorships for the amphitheater grand opening. Um, to date, they have received, uh, five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this is before us this evening. Looking for a motion from the board to accept the donations. Questions, comments, input from anyone?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Uh, looking at this list, I really believe that this board needs to read the names, and at least what tier they, these people are at. These people all donated. I went through each one of them. Nobody said they were doing it anonymous. So I think we owe it to read the list, and at least the tier. If you want to read the amount, that's fine too, but I think we need to give recognition and encourage other people to jump on this bandwagon.
Okay. Would you like to read them?
I'll read them. The Winchonin Garden Club, fifty dollars, bronze. Thomas and Deborah Kane, one hundred dollars, silver. Winchonin Lions Club, two hundred dollars, silver. Nellie Benjamin, twenty-five dollars, bronze. Salted Blonde Studio, five hundred dollars, platinum. Thomas and Law, PC, five hundred dollars, platinum. Piping Plover Baking, two hundred fifty dollars, gold. Our Pure Oil, five hundred dollars, platinum. Eddie and His Cruises, one hundred dollars, silver. Toy Town Kids Stop, one hundred dollars, silver. Tenny Remodeling, five hundred dollars, platinum. Flynn's Sweets, two hundred fifty dollars, gold. Linda Dagel, one hundred dollars, silver. Reagan Technologies Inc., five hundred dollars, platinum. Sewing Creations by Doreen Yvette, three hundred dollars, gold. Elm Grove Realty, five hundred dollars, platinum. Stone Farm Real Estate, five hundred dollars, platinum. Jack's Mobile Repair, five hundred dollars, platinum. The Salzback Family, two hundred fifty dollars, gold, for a total of five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars.
A huge thank you, yes. All right, so any questions, comments, or I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to accept the donation totaling five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars for the grand opening of the amphitheater, as presented this evening.
Second.
May and seconded to accept the donations, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much to all involved. Uh, one more item under old business, um, White Smo update, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Salzback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to update the community on this, um, really quickly, just as a reminder. This was a court-ordered determination, um, that was made prior to my arrival in town. I highlight that, because I had heard, um, through the grapevine, that it was me that forced that through, and it was about a year before I worked here, so, not me. Um, but as we look to turn the page, uh, on this property, I just wanted to highlight that the dam removal there is almost complete. It's nearing completion. Um, and we want to kind of start planning for the future of what that property looks like. It is privately owned, so we have limited control, but the owners of the property, as well as consultants from the property, um, have been receptive to my request that they, uh, come to the town early and provide an opportunity for residents of the community to give them some input and kind of shape what this project may ultimately look like. It's a significant property, it's significant in terms of the town's history, um, but also significant in terms of size, and significant in terms of the impact, uh, positive, negative, or otherwise, it could potentially have on the community when it's developed in the future. So, um, there is an upcoming visioning session coming up on February thirteenth, um, on your agenda, where representatives from that property are going to join this body. And I would just encourage members of the public, if they would like to participate in that conversation, they are welcome as well. Um, you know, it, it's early on, but now's the time to have those conversations about what the expectation is on the town side. And, um, from, at least from what I've seen to date, the owners of the property have been respe, uh, receptive in terms of being good partners with the community moving forward, and trying to find something, uh, that works for that property, uh, but also works for the community as well.
Now, is the property still for sale?
It is still for sale.
Okay. So this is, this would be, um, visioning what we would be ideally looking for in a, in a new owner?
Uh, not so much in the new owner, but more so what the new owner would potentially do with the property. Um, and I think for the current owners, the benefit in having that conversation is that when they're shopping this parcel around, they can communicate clearly to whoever a potential developer is, what the expectation is from the community, um, but also what, you know, what the community is willing, um, I guess, to take on. So, and it's a town-by-town thing. So for example, the logical, um, development up there, some type of mixed-use, commercial, residential. So when it comes to affordable units, is that something where the town would be comfortable having them all be affordable? Or they want it to be something blended, a portion of it? Um, and I think as a community, being able to communicate that clearly upfront helps better shape expectations for, um, future owners. better shape expectations for, um, future owners.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Yeah, there, there is a history with this, and some of us on the board have been through this for many years. My question, right out of the box, is always going to be, are the taxes on this property paid and current as of today?
Presently, they are not.
Okay. That's all I need to know, thanks.
And that, for the record, that is something that with the sale of the property would be cleared up, um, would be carved out of any proceeds, we would get paid in full.
Thank you. Anything further on this? All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Salzback. It, it's a, and as you notate in your, uh, in your letter, um, you know, the potential for the town to benefit from something going in there is huge. I, I like your, uh, your, the way you worded this, we're staring down a growing projected deficit for the next five years. Thank you. Next up, town managers' reports. Mr. Salzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll try to be brief. A finalist for the accountant position will be interviewed this evening in executive session. Uh, I will be meeting with department heads over the next few weeks to establish budgets for fiscal year twenty-four, and I just wanted to highlight quickly, and I'd communicated this to the board, um, I also touched on it very briefly in our quad board meeting, but I wanted to provide a little more detail. So the town unfortunately fell victim to what is referred to as a phishing scam, and the amount of twenty-seven hundred dollars. Essentially, somebody had reached out to a member of our team claiming to be Chief Smith, um, saying that they wanted to update their checking account for direct deposit. Um, that communication came with an email that looked like Chief Smith's email, it came with a canceled check that looked like one of Chief Smith's checks, um, and I think as Tony Roselli highlighted, they're becoming far more sophisticated with these schemes. So we received a phone call from Chief Smith come payday asking, um, you know, in somewhat in jest, in jest, if he'd been relieved of his duties and, and why he wasn't paid, uh, which prompted me to, to immediately kind of freeze that with the bank. Um, the bank, the bank spent several weeks trying to recapture the funds, they weren't able to. The next step was to look to our, um, insurance through Maya, where we already paid our deductible this year for the ransomware issue over the summer, it was my hope that we could kind of slip that in, have them cover it there. Um, unfortunately though, several days ago, we just got the news officially that they're not going to be able to cover that as well, so that will have to be a year-end transfer. Um, I have notified Mr. Kane with the Finance Committee, so we'll have to cover that amount. But I think the other piece on this that I wanted to highlight was, A, I wanted to bring it forward and kind of air it out to the community, um, you know, when these things happen, they're embarrassing, um, and it's not something that we're, uh, we're, we're proud of as an organization, but I, I think accountability is an important piece. Um, but also I wanted to highlight what we're doing to address the issue so that we don't fall for it moving forward. Among them is that I immediately implemented a policy that when those type of requests come through, you have to get verbal confirmation over the phone, pick up the phone, call the employee, um, ask if it's a legitimate request. The other piece is identifying grant funding to better train our employees, look out for phishing scams and other type of online scams. Um, and I will say that, that since this has occurred, there have been several more attempts, um, even one individual posing as me directing our treasurer, treasurer's office to release, um, a fairly large sum of money, and we did catch that one. So, um, these issues aren't going to go away, they're only going to get worse with time, um, and so we're trying to get ahead of that and be prepared for that. Are there any questions on that? No.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
So I just want to confirm that, when this is confirmed over the phone, this is the town treasurer, whoever's doing this, calling the person back and getting confirmation.
That is correct.
It's not the person calling in, saying, this is me.
Yes, oh, yeah, and that, that's one of the benefits of being a smaller organization, is we all know each other, um, so it's literally picking up the phone and saying, hey, Justin, did you actually authorize this? And then me saying, no, that is not me.
Right.
Um, which is a pretty foolproof way to avoid those issues.
Have a code word.
Yeah, yes. We'll, uh, we'll have a, a visioning session for, for a good code word we can use as a group. Uh, but anyway, I just wanted to apologize to the community, we're, uh, we're better than that, and it's not a large sum of money, but still, it's, um, you know, embarrassing. Um, on the personnel side of things, our assistant treasurer, Lori Taraducci, has resigned, the position has been posted, and we thank her for her service to Winchendon. Our staff completed a First Amendment audit training a couple of weeks ago, we appreciate the public's patience when we shut down for an hour midday to accomplish that training. And my office has released an RFP for CDBG services for fiscal twenty-three, that's usually done by our planning and development director, um, but my office has picked that up, so we expect results in a couple of weeks. For project updates, steel, if you've seen pictures, is being erected at the Winchendon Community Park Amphitheater Project. The fire station project earned approval at the polls this past Thursday, Chief Smith and I are going to be sitting down this Thursday to kick off the design phase, thank you, um, for the support from the community. Members of our team were accompanied by members of our state house delegation and engineers to make a case before Mass DEP for our Clean Water Trust application for the water main project. Um, we came up just short for the cutoff in terms of their available funding, and we're so hope, so we're hoping that, uh, the results of that hearing, um, will help us kind of push over that line a little bit. There was also an announcement over the weekend that, um, that new Massachusetts Governor, Maury Healy, is proposing legislation for about a one point three million dollar injection of funds into that account for this year, and so that will help move the line down a little bit, and we'd have a chance there. If not, um, we'll apply next year, and as always, we'll continue to try to identify other funds. Bullspit has officially announced the closing of their main event location with their intentions to go all in on the downtown Winchendon locations, that's great news on the economic development front. And our team has been working with engineers to file an application for the bike path funds for the Webster Street Parcel. Thank you to Lionel Cludier for walking the parcel with us, he's been a really good advocate for his neighborhood out there and getting that cleaned up, um, and also thank you to Mr. Krodo for putting the finishing touches on that application. Uh, just in the miscellaneous area, the capital planning committee met for the first time last week, and they will be meeting every Wednesday for the next five weeks. The Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee has been making rounds with various town boards and committees to answer questions about the program, um, just thank you to them, they're all volunteers, and it's a lot of work, so thank you for that. Vice Chair Ward and I met with our diversity, equity, and inclusion group to continue an assessment of town operations from that perspective. I held my first after-hours town manager talk about two weeks ago, thank you to citizens that came out to ask questions, it was two, two came out, um, but they were important questions, and I, I enjoyed spending time with them, so I'll, I'll continue doing those in the future, probably quarterly. And several members of the Winchendon team attended the annual MMA conference over the weekend, this included several useful workshops, including strengthening your municipal cybersecurity program and incident response planning, um, very, very topical. So, um, with that said, that is everything for now, thank you.
Thank you, any questions?
My apologies.
Mr. S.
Also, uh, late news, but I just wanted to thank our DPW team for all the work they're doing today. Uh, Mr. Krodo drove me around real quick for fifteen or twenty minutes this afternoon, um, and it is absolute chaos in there, but the DPW guys, um, are just cool as a cucumber. So thank you very much to them, it, it's a lot of hard work, and those are long news, so. Good job, and that is an excellent orange vest, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions, comments on the town manager's report? All right, moving on, we have one set of minutes this evening. Uh, it is the minutes of Monday, January ninth, twenty-twenty-three, our regular meeting. You can take a moment and take a look at the minutes. I do like the, the summary. Debbie's in here at the, oh, she's in the booth, yes. Um, I know the, the format of the minutes is something that we've been working on.
Mm-huh.
So at first glance, it looks good. Um, any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of January ninth, twenty-twenty-three, as written.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. We do, uh, no communications, no agenda items, um, we do have an executive session.
Let me read this.
Mr. Ward.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm motion to move into executive session, MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Subsection two, to, to, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely town accountant search discussion.
Second.
Would the maker and the seconder of the motion, um, accept amendment to add and adjourn back into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, roll call to go into executive session, Mr. Ward.
Aye.
Mrs. LaPointe.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, we are in executive session at seven fifty-three.